Hello, everyone. This regular meeting of the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee will now come to order at 7:00 P.M. Just note that this meeting is being both audio and video recorded and has anyone in the audience recording this meeting at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on. At this time off, we're able to stand and plumb.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. With this end, please take all.
Mr. Craftries, here. Mr. Tomaso?
Here.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Vazillo?
Here.
Mr. Hagler?
Mr. Hopper?
Here.
Mr. Lacatelle?
Here.
Ms. Sladizori?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wade, here?
Here.
Mr. Amorcas?
Here.
We have an open seat in Covington as well as Washington. Mr. Bartels cannot be here tonight. Our CBI meeting, Mr. Hope, is here. And our student rep, here, is here. We have a call.
Perfect, thank you. Chair certifies that this agenda is valid in accordance with NAS Open Meeting Law. Now, the first order of business is response from the audience. Would anyone like to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on. Student Affairs is next. Niana, you're on the floor.
So, this past Saturday, Wacona Student Council held a homecoming at the Stationery Factory, which was a huge success. It was a very fun night. Unified basketball, our unified basketball team has had about three games so far in their season, and we just won our most recent game yesterday, which is very exciting. Wacona's National Honor Society induction will be held next Tuesday. And in November, on November 9th and November 10th, Wacona's Apollonian Players will be presenting their play Night at the Wex Museum.
Okay, thank you. That was November?
November 9th and 10th.
Okay, Secretary's report. Would a member please make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of October 11th of this year?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 11th, 2018, as printed.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the meeting of October 11th. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. Remember, please dispense with a warrants.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-8 dated October 18, 2018, payable in the amount of $612,992.11. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR 2019-8. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
No.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-8D dated October 18, 2018, $115,705.91. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR 2019-8 Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
No.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-8DS dated October 18, 2018, $122,338.48. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR 2019-8 Delta Sierra. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
No.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP 2019-8 dated October 26, 2018, counts payable in the amount of $641,781.11. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP 2019-8. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
No.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP 2019-8S dated October 26, 2018, $1,497.38. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP 2019-8 Sierra. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? No. Extension, the motion carries.
It's the end of the warrants.
Thank you. Next order of business is underreported. The Chair, as you heard the Superintendent this evening, we still have a Washington and Covington School Committee vacancy. And just recall that the MAS-C, MAS-S Conference is coming up in a couple of weeks, but we have the resolutions here that were asked out or handed out through email a week ago or so. So, I hope all the committee had a chance to read through those. We're going to go through these one at a time and see how the committee wishes to vote at the conference. So, remember, please make the motions. We have nine resolutions.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee's delegates to the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference vote to endorse Resolution 1, Rejecting the Arming of Educators.
We have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 1, the revoting purposes at the conference. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee's delegates to the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference vote to endorse Resolution Number 2, Small and Rural Districts. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve endorsement of Resolution 2. Is there any discussion? Mr. Lacatelle?
If you enjoyed the Berkshire Education Task Force, where we had a very renowned committee of doing the same thing in Berkshire County, you will love this because this calls for a statewide version of that. And I will vote for it, but I wonder why we're doing it, why they're doing it.
None of these votes are binding. These are just, we're putting our weight behind it a little bit.
Yeah, what happens is, as these are approved, it goes to the legislature.
Well, in this one, this one, MAS-C creates a...
That's worse.
Yeah.
The one thing I was looking at was that they were proposing some modifications to the foundation budget. So, would that affect by us?
It's expected to.
That's the goal of it.
Right. That's why I would be in favor.
Any more discussion?
Well, the only thing I would say is, they did counter, they did say that there was some pushback for consolidating schools, so that was ultimately, so I think that's not, the goal is not to consolidate schools. It's to...
Is that it?
That's all I had to say on that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee's delegates to the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference vote to endorse Resolution Number 3, Elimination of the Federal Department of Education. Period.
We have a motion in a second to endorse Resolution Number 3. Is there any discussion?
If we say no to this, or if we say yes, do we get rid of the Department of Education person? That's not a good enough... Okay. Public education.
So, just a reminder, any, you know, if you want this endorsed, we all vote. We vote yes, we have a majority voting yes. Otherwise, if you have a tie or less, it votes no. And the person going to the conference will vote accordingly. So, is there any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee's delegates to the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference vote to endorse Resolution Number 4, Regional School Transportation. Second.
We have a motion in a second to endorse Resolution 4. Is there any discussion?
This is confusing to me. It's pretty direct in terms of getting less companies to bid, but there's so few companies, so many aren't in business. How can you force some to happen? I'm a little confused where they think this is going to do it. Apparently, they feel there is something. Are you aware of any?
Well, I can tell you, we went out to bid, what, two years ago, three years ago, and I sent the bid proactively to 10 companies, and we received one bid. I think it's because of the area that we're in.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We're very, I don't want to say isolated, but to some companies, we seem to be isolated.
Does the law that's referenced in this motion prohibit us from collaborating with other districts to form a transportation collaborative?
That's a good question.
I neglected to look up that law, but they, they sounded like we were prohibited from doing that.
It does, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It does sound like that. I do know of some districts in South Berkshire that have tried to collaborate. The problem with our areas is that it's very wide, so it's hard to get one company to be able to do two districts at once that they have solicited bids together.
Okay, so...
I'm not quite sure what that's referencing.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of endorsing Resolution Number 4, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee's delegates to the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference vote to endorse Resolution Number 5, Reporting and Accountability Standards. Second.
We have a motion in a second to endorse Resolution Number 5. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee's delegates to the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference vote to endorse Resolution Number 6, Reproductive Health Education. Second.
We have a motion in a second to endorse Resolution Number 6. Is there any discussion?
I'm shocked that this is even on here. I wrote, as I was reading it, I wrote OMG. I thought we'd moved beyond that in this world, but no, I guess not.
Especially in this state. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee's delegates to the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference vote to endorse Resolution Number 7, Gender Identity Inclusive Athletic Participation Policy. Second.
We have a motion in a second to endorse Resolution Number 7. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee's delegates to the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference vote to endorse Resolution Number 8, Sports Wage Earnings.
We have a motion in a second to endorse Resolution Number 8. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed, no opposition. Any extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee's delegates to the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference vote to endorse Resolution Number 9, Access to Information for Parents and Students to Our Clients of Special Education. Second.
We have a motion in a second to endorse Resolution Number 9. Is there any discussion?
Oh, we have a discussion, I have a question. Where the opponent of the resolution explains it's not always possible to compare all info, and then it talks about the possibility of having to go out and hire somebody to translate and bring it in. How real is that, or how difficult would that be for us?
For us, this is, this is a doable resolution. I could speak to the realities of larger systems, but for us, this is, I think, reasonable.
Yeah, we don't have that.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. We'll complete these endorsements. So, whoever the member is going to be voting for the ultimate, we now have instructions of how to vote. So, thank you. Anderson, on the note of the election coming up and the members whose seats are up for the election, moving on to subcommittee reports and recommendations. Curriculum?
Curriculum, we met last week, 10:18 at Central Office, and we were, we listened to the school improvement plans that were reviewed by Leslie, Patty, and Lori, and we asked lots of questions, and we made lots of comments. I think it was an incredibly good conversation that we had, and thank you to Leslie, Patty, and Lori for presenting all those facts for us. I'm not going to take time away from their presentation, but I just wanted to say at the elementary schools, they were all similar school improvement plans that focused generally on making, having students meet or exceed targets as measured by state and local assessments, and through the practice at UDL. And there was also a PBIS goal and a SEL goal also discussed, and those were even personal for all the elementary schools. At Nessicus, the goals were to increase student growth in ELA Math Science through the use of Instructional Coach, DESI Tiered Literacy Academy, targeted interventions via UDL, and targeted mastery-oriented feedback to teachers regarding quality and rigor. They also develop, have, will develop a turnaround plan, implement a world of difference, and that's the Anti-Defamation League program, and develop a PBIS team, and work with the PBIS Academy through DESI. At Wacona, the goals will be to meet and exceed learning targets on the 2019 NCAS, to continue to expand access to rigor in AP classes, and to implement PBIS. They've already accomplished a goal of relocation and parent unification, and it was very successful. So, our next meeting will be on, oh, I wrote it down somewhere. I have it. November 15th, it will be at Wacona at 6:00, and the topic will be math. And we're going to be looking specifically at math data from born, and we're also going to be discussing the calendar for next year.
And the, may I add one thing just to think of the, this is the first time we did a deep dive of curriculum into the school improvement plans. You see the presentation of the overarching goals, but each goal has several key actions, benchmarks, individuals responsible, materials that are needed. And we really did a deep dive into each of them with Patty and Leslie leading most of the conversation, and it was really helpful because we were able to vet kind of some of our thoughts and our plans with the committee. So, I think it would be a nice process to keep in place because we could really spend a lot of time on each one, looking at every step. And tonight, you'll see the overview from the principles of the goals, but it was nice to actually process each of the steps. So, it could be nice to continue that. It's the first time we've done that that way.
I think we'd like to. That's all I have to do.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions for curriculum? All right, move on to finance.
We haven't met. We roll on meat until after the reorganization of the school committee.
Okay, thank you. Policy? As anyone speaking on behalf of Mr. Hagler.
But we haven't met since our last school committee meeting.
Okay.
We're trying to get a meeting in place, but nothing's been set yet.
All right. Mr. Bueno gave me some instruction before the meeting, but I guess Mike, Mike has handed out the results of his self-evaluation. So, I know we have this before us this evening, we won't be going into it in any detail, but according to what Greg tells me, we scored better than we have in previous years, so obviously we're seeing improvements, and people are more satisfied with the way things are being conducted, how this school committee is functioning. So, we'll wait until policy comes back with, you know, their specific observations and any recommendations.
That's a quick question, interpretive.
So, we changed up how it's scoring. Normally, we would do a one being excellent and I think a five being poor.
Okay.
So, on the spreadsheet, you'll see that it's both ways. Now, we're going to do a 10 being excellent and a 2 being poor. So, if you look at the bottom, it has the scoring both ways, so you can compare to last year, because last year, we used the 1 through 5 scale. But then it also has the new scale we'll be using forward.
Okay.
So, this year, if you look at governance, next year, or in the new scale, it's going to be a 7.8, but last year, with last year's 1 through 5 scale, it's 2.4.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So, just for the public standpoint, the school committee every year evaluates itself in terms of its performance over the past year. There's seven categories: governance, operations, member relations, committee superintendent relations, strategic planning and fiscal management, community relations, and conduct of meetings. So, each member could either take a paper version of this survey or do it online. I think the online version worked very well, I did it myself. It really streamlined, I think, we've come a long way in the past couple of years on this. And the policy's been working hard on it to improve it, not just the format, but the questions. So, this is a step in the right direction. We'll hear more next time. So, thank you to the policy for all the hard work on this. And the school committee gave themselves a B. Thank you. He's interested. Okay, personnel.
We have an ongoing project to improve the superintendent evaluation tool. We've been working on that. Hopefully, we'll bring something to the full committee and the superintendent sometime in the near future. But it is an iterative process and can be time-consuming. This coming Tuesday, we have teacher negotiations, and that's going to be the first session since last June, but it will be our sixth meeting in these negotiations. We have work to do in executive session, but I would suggest that we delay part of that because, all of it, because we have a number of people in the audience that don't need to attend that.
Okay, curriculum? There's no objections by the school committee, we'll refer that to the other meeting. All right. Technology, I think Mr. Les has a meeting planned for... And finally, school building project. Do we have a presentation?
In your email. Well, I will start, but buy you a few minutes. There's a three-slide presentation in your email. So, today, we met with the working group. I guess the best way I would describe it, I'm looking at Mr. Roth who's there, is it's kind of getting even more real. So, just to give you a couple of dates that I can speak to, I will be at the MSBA on the 31st on Wednesday. There has been some confusion in the community, so this gives me an opportunity to clarify. The vote on October 31st is purely for the MSBA to approve the preferred schematic report that you have already voted on, determining the design that we will use if the vote for the project is approved, and that the school committee, the school building committee has already voted on. So, that's all that's happening at the MSBA, is they have to officially say, yes, we agree with your preferred schematic report, your actual physical structure that you will plan to build, should your vote go forward, is endorsed by us. There's been a little bit of confusion in the community that this is actually the vote. That is not the case. So, if you are out in the communities, please help to clarify. The vote to determine if we will actually move forward into construction is likely going to be April 6.
6.
April 6. So, it's a ways out, there'll be a lot of conversation. You will vote prior to then on the actual budget for the project. The school building committee will as well. So, that would be helpful if you can clarify that. Today, in our working group, we were talking a little bit about the net zero versus lead silver. Net zero is quite costly. At this point, there are a few projects for high schools in process to achieve that, but none that are completely there. So, very, very rare right now. Lead silver, however, is a very environmentally responsive building, and that really is what is being advised at this time for us. But we will be taking a vote on that at our next school building committee meeting. At our next school building committee meeting, there will also be a vote, and let's hope I do this well, as to if we're going to go with CM versus CM at Risk. We are being advised to go with the CM at Risk, which is when the CM comes on board earlier in the process, works more with you like a partner, as opposed to after the fact. So, we're going to take a vote on those two things at the next school building committee meeting. The next thing that came up today that there will be...
CM's construction, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'm like, I can't talk to you. Sorry, this is our school teaching moment. I can't do the overview, you got to do the detail. The next thing that really was starting, just to give you a sense of how real this is kind of becoming, we were actually dialoguing today about air conditioning and about the concept of parts of the building versus the entire building, the cost of that, the impact to the environmentally friendly nature of the building, as well as the impact after the fact to maintain the building. So, really, really substantive conversations are getting started. We had an HVAC and electrical engineer at the meeting today presenting to us on some information. So, that, if I got through that and I was accurate enough, the engineers in the room, Sean's going to talk a little bit more about the dates that are coming up.
Yeah, the CM at Risk that you heard Lori talk about, first of all, is you can go either 149A or 149, something like that. I might be getting the numbers wrong, but it's basically the difference between doing a serial process where they let contracts ahead of time, and it takes, it takes a bit longer to get through to the endpoint of having a building in place. CM at Risk, I personally like it better because it's a collaborative process upfront where the construction team, where everyone works together as a team, in a team effort to get the design done and implemented as a building. So, it's, you're probably an integrated product type team is what I look at. So, it's a much, to me, a much better process, and it's, it's considered less risk, and I would endorse that by far. So, I'm not saying how we're going to go with this, but the school building committee will be going on that, and I think right now, they're all in that position where they're leaning towards CM at Risk.
If you want to see more of the details, there's a presentation that was done for us at the school building committee meeting that is on the website. So, you can actually look at the breakdown in there, similar to Mr. Amorcas having the favor of CM at Risk.
In fact, when we did our interviews of both the OPM and the design team, we got a lot of insight into what the difference between CM and CM at Risk is, and most of them coming in pretty much endorse the CM at Risk approach. All right, so what I wanted to do was put together some timeline milestones. So, this is just to try to get everybody calibrated this evening. We're past the eligibility phase, we're in the feasibility phase. We formed the team, we did the feasibility study. Right now, we're in schematic design phase, what they call Module 4. So, that will be concluding, I would say it would really be concluding around February with, when the final report's submitted. So, we're way early compared to where we thought we might be in November. Just one more slide here. I put this together, I hope everyone can read this. I did this in a rush today. I did this in a rush today. Basically, we've got a bunch of working group meetings. That's a subcommittee of the school building committee coming up between today and through February 14th. Then the school building committee is going to be meeting four times between now and February 14th. Various reasons, I'll try to read these off. The meeting today was to cover fire protection, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. And you heard Lori talk about the net zero and the lead. So that was just the discussion today. The next time, they go into architectural and design. Then they go into site, landscape, and civil. Technology, security, materials, and structural systems. And then they've got three follow-up meetings to discuss how any of this is turning out and evolving until they get to the final design. School building committee will be voting on a lot of these, most of these aspects as well. And they're going to be meeting monthly until we get to the end point. They're just showing there kind of what the focus of the votes will be on at those points in time, those points in time. We get out to January, that's when the school committee will next see, I call it a primer to the school committee. So they see what the design is and they get an early, a little early insight into the cost estimate. And then finally, on February 14th, Valentine's Day, we're going to vote this forward. Working group meeting will meet for the last time in this phase of the cycle. The school building committee will be meeting to recommend it to the school committee. And the school committee will be having the official vote, which sets the voting date, the conditions of the vote. And then it'll go forward to the towns. The plan is to get it out to, well, then the team, so it's the design, the MSBA. And April 6th is a Saturday. We have a meeting to vote in seven towns. And the MSBA board will be reviewing and approving on the 10th of April. So then shortly thereafter, I don't know how long it's going to actually take, but if you get a positive vote, we'll be starting our construction phase. So a lot going on between now and, now, February, April. Any questions? Okay. Make sure it's right. Any questions on any of that again? Okay, we'll move on. School reports and recommendations.
I'll go over my report briefly so that we have time for the school improvement plans and then we can go directly into the personnel matters. The, I did just include some information. I won't speak extensively about the PBIS. But again, if you do have a chance to look at the links, one of the things we've been talking a lot about is how does PBIS go together with SEL? And there's an article that I linked that was shared with me by some of our principals that really describes well how they work together in an environment. They're really not separate. They're really addressing just a whole school environment. And they're very complimentary. Under social emotional learning update, I did include an article which I really was interested by. Caught my attention. Some of our principals have shared with families around the connection between early cellphone use and bullying, both being a victim of a bully, being a victim of bullying and engaging in bullying yourself. We're putting devices in the hands of kids who are not developmentally ready to handle them. And it really is talking about students in the grades three through five primarily. And it's an interesting article. We're trying to do more parent education around these kinds of things. But there was some good research there. Nice little picture of Mr. Rob and Mr. Messina. But talking about social emotional learning, for those of you who follow them on Twitter, the Wacona Twitter. Mr. Rob has started this year the positive sign Wednesday. And I'm sure that Hannah could speak to it as well. But really, teachers submitting names of students who really exemplify some really positive traits. This would be something that would fall under PBIS. Proactively acknowledging positive behavior that we value and really celebrating it. So I just wanted to bring attention just to something that Mr. Rob, of course, is giving the credit to a colleague of his where he got the idea, but he has put a Wacona spin on it that's working well. Despite multiple attempts to get information, we are still waiting on our SEL grant. They said the end of October. So we are four days out. Let's see, four school days. The MCAS review, just quickly, you'll hear Mr. Rob. I had said that because the level of information was so extensive in Leslie and I's MCAS report that each meeting, I would just break down a different part of it. And I'm kind of going slow with it to kind of fill up our capacity. This week, I'm talking about the rigorous coursework indicator. That makes up part of the overall performance of the high school. They're actually scored based on this. What it is, is students in their junior and senior year enrolling in and passing what's considered rigorous coursework. The state has a list of what these courses are. These courses are tied to students being more successful in college. So they're looking to see students really being encouraged and supported to continue to access rigorous coursework even after they've met the competency determination. The courses that are on that list include advanced placement courses. They include courses like pre-calculus, which even if it's not an advanced placement course, there is data to support that successfully taking a class at that level will increase your success at the college level without having to take remedial courses, which are tied to less students completing college. So there's kind of a whole theme here. There are also for dual enrollment courses. So you know, we have dual enrollment agreements where you can take a course onsite at Wacona and you can apply it for college credit at BCC. So there's an entire list of courses the state puts out. And then if a student is enrolled in them, they count towards this percentage when Mr. Bueno does his state reporting. So when you look at it, you'll see on this report card, Wacona in 2017 had 63.5% of students participating in advanced coursework at the junior and senior level. In 2018, they had a goal, their target was 66.3. They did improve, but they didn't meet their target. So we remember the scoring is, I met my target, I get four. I'm sorry, I exceeded my target, I get four. I met, I get three. I improved but below the target, two. And then no change, one, decline, zero. So in all students, they improved but below their target. And then in two subgroups, they declined. In a school as small as Wacona, that's a matter of one or two students really making a decision whether or not to take a rigorous course. So this year, we're really looking at that list very closely. We already have an idea of what our target would be and whether or not we're going to meet it. And we're breaking it down to look at the subgroups as well. Now, students, in their need to come first. But when the need really is that the student is capable and would benefit from accessing rigorous coursework, what the state is encouraging is that we really push beyond just the traditional advanced coursework students and really encourage more students. It's in line with what Mr. Rob will talk about in expanded AP. Does that make sense, how that works? It's the only part of the accountability system right now, other than the attendance factor and the graduation and dropout, that have anything to do with students at the junior and senior level. It's more about worrying about all students. It's no longer, at the high school level, your performance used to be on student growth and overall achievement based on your math, your English, and your science scores. We know that's not true anymore in our high school. Our score is based on how many students are taking rigorous courses as juniors and seniors. How many students in grades nine through 12 are chronically absent? How many students graduate in four years, in five years, and then what your dropout rate is? That's all put together to come up with their performance. So this is one component of it. So we'll keep talking about, I think, small chunks kind of help and then it'll all come together. Does that make sense? That's kind of what I wanted...
Question about that?
Yeah.
I should know this, but I don't remember. The AP courses, you know, cost money for people to enroll in. Students, is there funding for people who can't afford to take the course?
So yes, so there is funding. The cost is for sitting for the exam. So there is funding for students automatically if they're free and reduce lunch. But we also do accommodate students who might not fall into that category but do need support through the guidance office. So the cost is about that exam that they actually...
Is that communicated to parents at all? Because they might not know it and they just don't think they can go for it because there's money involved.
We certainly have been making an effort to, absolutely. And Katie Salavantis, who is the high school guidance counselor who coordinates, does regularly get in touch with Ms. Velkowsky. So I do think it is fairly well communicated. And the amount of kids we are subsidizing the cost of the exam for would indicate the information is out there. But it's a priority, absolutely. We would never, ever want anybody to, and hopefully, anybody on TV or in the listening, to not participate in AP over a financial reason. And Mr. Rob, I think, does a nice job of making sure that's communicated, even if you're not a traditional free and reduced lunch student. But it is a factor, especially if you're taking more than one.
And they're measuring against us. So it has an effect on our score, so...
I've never heard that before.
About the...
I've never heard it communicated from the high school in the way that's being suggested.
So we do have a group of students who do have, again, I'm not directly part of the communication to it. And I can certainly ask Mr. Rob to talk about that. But the guidance counselor, who is responsible for AP, does refer a decent amount of students to us who we do subsidize the cost. So I can ask, when Mr. Rob's up in a bit, to kind of talk a little bit more about how that information is delivered because it's obviously somewhat personal when it's student to student, I can say on TV right now.
I think if it came out in, it is Wednesday emails, Mr. Rob's Wednesday emails, and parents get that. Because I think what you're getting at is some folks aren't even, some parents aren't even, you know, they're not even putting it on the table because they think there's a fee associated with it and they're not even going to address it. And it's, you know, it's different than just the stigma of free and reduced lunch and those folks. But it's those other kids and parents that might not be aware of it that we might be willing to subsidize.
Good suggestion. We can even do something as simple of, if you're considering taking an AP course and you need financial assistance for the exam, email Mrs. Salavantis. And that way, it covers anybody, because you're probably right, Mr. Kizil. We're getting the people who have already decided. And if somebody's actually using finances as a reason not to, we don't want that. So we can certainly do that. The quarterly, if you click on it, you will be, you will be busy for a lot, a long time. You will be busy for a long time. So, but that is the level of information that our director of teaching and learning is putting into teachers' hands constantly. That is a lot of heavy lifting on her part to have that quarterly as updated and user-friendly as it is. So please do take a look. You don't need to spend as much time with it as we are, but do take a look. Just so you know, parent-teacher conferences dates are there. At our meeting in November, our director of food services will be with us, who you would ask to meet. So I just wanted to let you know about that. And I believe, who's fired up first, the elementary? So I believe elementary, are there any other questions or suggestions? Any other questions or suggestions, though? Because I always ask questions, but suggestions are welcome as well. You can always email me as well if you think about something afterwards, or I know some of you do. The October 1 numbers are in here, the preliminary. So if there are any, you know, questions, we talked a little bit about opening day. But do let me know if there's anything that you'd like to have more information on. Mrs. Buckley can't be here tonight, but our elementary administrators, Mrs. Wepuski from Beckett and Mr. Liu and Mrs. Pecor from Craneville are going to go over their school improvement plan together. They focused on it as a group, so they're going to present it together.
I know this is preliminary enrollment, but do we have a sense of how it compares to last year?
We do.
In the total number?
We do. And if it's, okay, would you rather than me, yes, can I send out last year so you actually have the hard copy? You can look directly. Would that be okay? So I should have done that. That's a, next year, I'll do that. I will include last year's official.
Right. It should be compared to the official.
Okay, so I'll send that out tomorrow so you have that document. Let me try. Yes. I'm just going to move, so...
Good evening, everybody. As Barbara pointed out, the three elementary schools, we work together, Kathy and Annie and, huh? And we came up with goals. And our goals are very similar. If you dive deeper in, as Lori was talking about, they differ in our action plans. You know, they differ based on our school's needs, the resources we have, the staffing resources, where our staff is on the continuum, what our particular student needs are. So that's where it's a little different. But overall, our three goals are the same. We have a goal on school improvement, SEL, and PBIS. So our plan was that we were each going to talk about a different thing, but Kathy couldn't be here tonight, so we'll make it work. So anyway, the first one is the school improvement plan. No? Student achievement, if they are. So this is a similar goal to what we do every year. We want our students to improve. It's a little different this year because we talked about UDL, we want to really make that part of the process, our coaching model. And the other big thing is, we always talk about improvement for all the students. But this year is, you know, when you've been listening to MCAS, it's really important that our subgroups improve and we bring up our bottom group. So if we built into the goal that students will meet or exceed targets for all students as well as student subgroups as measured by state and local assessment. So that is really what we're looking at for student achievement. We want everyone to be brought up, whether they're up here or down here, we need to have them improve. And through these ATMS, ATMs, action plan, we figure we're going to bring that bottom 20% up, which is what the state is really looking at this year. So we have already done this. Lori's helped with this, sharing the data results with staff. And our various staff meetings, she came, it was great, I think Leslie came for a couple, and presented what she presented to you at school committee. So it was, the staff was really grateful to be able to see what's happening in our buildings but in the whole district. And I think there's a greater understanding. I mean, I could see it in our staff meeting. They were fascinated by the data. And I think it figures into how they buy in, which is important. We're all creating different targeted interventions based on our data analysis from collaborative inquiries. We're just in the process now of doing quarterly benchmarks with a new yardstick, which is called Edge Elastic. And the teachers are really excited about it. And I think that that data is going to be really important for our collaborative inquiry groups. Our coaching model has been very successful. Kathy and I are coaching principals. Patty Roby is working with Craneville. She did a demo lesson for the admin team today about coaching model with Kathy Colleen Traeger, our fifth grade teacher. And it's fascinating to watch because it's not about correcting what someone's doing wrong. It's about bringing them to the next level. Just like what we're trying to do with students, we're trying to do it with teachers. Our goal is that all of the staff will have completed the UDL 101 graduate course. And at least a third of them will have registered for the 102, which is coming this spring. And here down here is the Edge Elastic implemented. We've implemented it, it's started, and we'll give it three times this year. And we're really excited about the data that it's giving us. You can do the next one.
Can you just clarify, I don't know if the whole committee knows. They've heard about Study Island and why we made that shift that Edge Elastic is perfectly aligned.
Study Island was, you've probably heard about that, tool that we used last year. Leslie and I were pretty involved in doing some research and finding it. But we probably didn't give us everything that they promised. And we wanted it really well-aligned with the MCAS. We wanted it to have the same kind of rigor, same stamina that children would need. And we weren't thrilled with it. And teachers weren't thrilled with the data that I got back. So this year, we worked with them closely and they said they would adjust it. But we just never found that they did what we needed. And we had discovered Edge Elastic. And Leslie made the hard call and moved us. And everyone's been really, really happy so far.
Yeah, I feel at Craneville that both teacher feedback and actually student feedback, even though it did take them, even though we ran it like in MCAS where they started at a specific time, they worked right through. Students felt that it was, that it was challenging, but that they could, they could access, that they could access it. So I do think we are going to get good information from it to really pinpoint what we can, what we can target.
And we're getting it at real time. None of the schools are done. But I'm able to already pull up classes as they were taking the test and see what they were doing, see what standards, oh, she really needs to work on this area, or, you know, individual. It's a great tool.
Right. And it can inform, some teachers have come to me and said that it can inform some of their strategy groups pretty much right away. Because you get the, you get the data right there. It's technology.
The biggest thing is, it's literally former MCAS test. It is aligned. It is the, it took a little while for a program like this to come out because we know we've only had MCAS 2.0 for two years. This is it. So anytime you try and create something, but you're not it, there's a margin for error. And we eliminated the margin for error.
Right. I think that's probably meant the kids felt...
Yeah. And I was thrilled to see, like, the third graders who, you know, they sit for MCAS, they've never taken one before. This was an MCAS they sat down to. And there were some faults for certain kids, but I'd rather... bumps for certain kids, but I'd rather have them have the bump in October than in April when they're taking the test.
Our next, our next slide is on PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Interventions in Support. In Craneville, in Kittredge, and Beckett-Washington are all implementing PBIS, although we may be in different phases of implementation, which is why if you read our plans, our action steps will be different. Something that I know is universal is we all have core values that we have all rolled out to our schools, and on October, I think it was the 5th, whatever the end service day was for, for our schools, we worked as a staff to really dig in and decide what our action steps would be as a school. So Beckett-Washington, I believe we worked with Wakona, Nessakis worked on their plan, and Kittredge, and worked alone, and Craneville worked alone, and really decided, we have our core values, we know that we are working explicitly teaching them to our students, how can we work together to really make sure that our next steps are strategic and that they reach all students? So we have decided to put together a PBIS leadership team, so that's something that will exist in all of the elementary schools, to work on that action plan and to monitor it. So if we're meeting every four to six weeks, we can come back to it and decide, how is it going? For example, if we decide to, a component of PBIS is really making sure that we are highlighting, you know, the students that are really embodying our core values. How do we want to do that? Do we want to have a school-wide, you know, something that we hand students when we see, when we see them doing something wow, like you're being scholarly, or you're being, you're exhibiting pride, or you're exhibiting being responsible? Is that something we want to do? And we have to make sure that we're monitoring it and that it's working. So we have to make sure that it's not just coming from administration, but it's a, it's a different, it's a variety of teachers and specialists in our building. We need to make sure that we're looking at behavior data in the school, because if the purpose of PBIS is to make sure that we're creating a safe and successful academic and social climate, we have to make sure that places like the playground, in the cafeteria, in the classroom, in the hallways, that we are reducing the amount of issues that we're seeing. So part of it is looking at your core values, looking at the different places within the building, and then monitoring if we're seeing success, and that we're explicitly teaching students, what does being responsible look like on the playground? What does being respectful look like in the cafeteria? And it's really about providing that education for students so that they feel it's proactive, so that they're learning it, and then we can reward them when they are, when they're demonstrating that, that, you know.
And I think, yeah, the one, the one challenge in my CLE, elementary school is that you have students who are kindergarten and then in fifth grade. So like the language, the kid-friendly conversation and pictures to support in kindergarten will look a little bit different than in fifth grade. So like our first assembly, we roll out, oh, we viewed our core values from last year, like even the word scholarly, we want the fifth graders can tell you what that means, what it looks like, but our kindergartners, there's a need for education around that. So it's really just supporting all developmental stages at elementary school, making sure that we're addressing all four of the core values we have. And I think, like, I was at Kittredge last week for a training, and I heard they were doing a positive behavior referrals over the announcements in the morning. That was their way of encouraging, acknowledging positive behavior, whereas Craneville, we're using our monthly meetings, our, our community meetings to kind of acknowledge that behavior as well. So every school, again, is at different stages, but we're all rolling out kind of the same plan.
So I have a question for you. We heard the last meeting about the state evaluates us in terms of chronic absenteeism.
Yeah.
We know that 10% is, is an issue, that's where you hit the threshold. Also know that one of the reasons students have chronic absentee issues or challenges is due to how they feel their school environment is, being, feeling unsafe. How would this reach into that?
Our, our next slide will-
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Is there definitely correlation?
Oh, I think so, yeah, definitely. Because I think if we, like Laurie was saying at the beginning in her, in her presentation, how PBIS and social emotional learning are linked, our next slide is about social emotional learning, and part of that work will be addressing chronic absenteeism.
I didn't try to set that off.
A beautiful segue into-
But all the data shows that children feel safe emotionally, that they do better academically, you know?
Right.
It makes sense.
And, you know, in my experience in Craneville, and if I feel it at Craneville, which is a little bit of a bigger, which is a bigger school than, than Beckett-Washington, and in Kittredge, I know that Nathan and I really work to try to have an open dialogue with family, with families when it comes, when it comes to absenteeism, and making sure that if there's something we can assist them with, and that it isn't, it isn't a safety, it isn't a feeling of not feeling safe, or is, is not something linked to, because that would be, that would be a concern for us, and would be directly linked to something that we would have to address through a system like that.
So we're going to throw Nathan to the world, and we can do Kathy's one.
Yeah, so I think the key here is social emotional learning, is realizing how closely tied it is to PBIS. So we are trying to kind of foster and instill in all the students that kind of success, but without the feeling of a safe school climate, they're not going to do that. So it's kind of echoing what we've already talked about, and you will see in our focus area number three is to monitor that chronic absenteeism. So at least at Craneville, we are running bi-weekly reports, kind of, kind of catching it early. As we, our target at 10% are 18 days, so after almost 40 days of school, just looking at patterns or families we can support for that.
Yeah, and as Laurie mentioned, waiting to see, you know, part of our work through that social emotional learning grant would be, one of the things we would have to do to satisfy that requirement would be to put together a social emotional learning steering committee, and we would really be reaching out to nurses, really working, reaching out to our school adjustment counselors, to be taking an active leadership role in that work, and that would, like you said, that is a concern. That work would be directly linked to making sure that that was not a problem, and what could we put into place to address that.
So I think the over, the goal would be to explore, analyze, and assess the components of social emotional learning, and to ensure a safe and productive school climate. So I think a lot of this work at elementary school level is working with our school adjustment counselors, working as a team. Like we started a PBIS team, we're also working to start a SEL team, just kind of look at our school environment as, and you talked about where do the most kind of problems occur, how can we support student, student safety and less structured areas as well.
Right, and the bottom line is, you know, the action steps on both, I think, all of our plans for PBIS and SEL is to create structures so that students are spending more time in academics, and have more access to, to, to even, you know, in the elementary schools, a rigorous curriculum, and spending time, we want them to be in the classroom, engaging in, in all of math, science, and, you know, everything that they need, that they need. And these types of structures, UDL, PBIS, and SEL really, I think, create a framework to allow that to happen. And looking at the data and really, really holding ourselves accountable to saying, is this working? Where do we need to make adjustments? It is part of our hard work.
I think with, under four, working with state agencies about safety protocols, we have our monthly safety meetings that rotates through the schools to look at, like drills and location drills, according to just did, to look at our safety plans, to make sure we have a tight response to any situations that are taking place.
And Melissa Wukowski can stop the bleed. We have a whole new program that school nurses are involved in, office administrators, which is, if that's stopping the bleed is called, but it's another kind of thing to keep children safe.
Question, are there any questions about any of those?
Nate, just something, and I realize you can't present everything in these of the slides that you sort of picked, but I just, to play off of something, I thought I heard you mention about the way you're doing things at Craneville-
Yep.
-on a monthly basis. I really hope that you're, you're focusing on real-time acknowledgement of behaviors-
Yep.
-and making sure that that, because that ties into the social emotional learning, and particularly the age group that you guys are-
Yep.
-interacting with. That, that holds, that holds much more weight than something that's given at the end of the month for positive-
Yeah, right.
I think we all have our monthlies, and then we have our, you know, positive office referrals daily, we have a Bravo board at Beckett, where every day kids will pick up stickies, and, you know, we, it's all different, it's daily, monthly, weekly, it's whatever.
And they are, they're acknowledged in real time, so if we get one today, we acknowledge, and you and I meet with a student, encourage them, send it home to the family, we photocopy it, send it home, but then in front of their peers as well, we're acknowledging them in front of the whole student body at the end of the month. But individually, they're acknowledged or in front of their class immediately.
That esteem building will also help with this particular slide as well.
Certainly, definitely.
And I think even to, there's been a shift, I know that in the, in like the units of study, there's the calling the students writers and calling them readers. I find that we are really trying to call them scholars, to call them leaders in our building, and even just every time we address them, like you said, it's about building them up to feel safe, and to feel positive, and to feel a part of our academic and social community. I think, I think that's important, I think that's a key to, to success.
Are there any other questions at this point about the presentation?
You talked about coaching in the first slide, and could you describe back a little bit what that looks like? Yes, it's, I know you said you met with Patty. So Patty is our coach at the K to eight level, right? And what, I'll tell you what it looked like today, our fifth grade teacher was doing a lesson, a reading lesson, and she had a good plan, and she shared that with us, and we knew what her teaching points were, and she was prepared, Patty was going to be in there, and she knew it, and she was looking forward to it. So throughout the lesson, Patty would sometimes maybe pose a deeper level thinking question to the student, sometimes she would get in the teacher's ear and say, you know, this is going a little long, why don't you skip this part and move on to the next? So it was all very much in real time, but it was, it was a really well-choreographed dance, is what it is. And the children were completely unfazed by it, but it was wonderful for them to see their teacher willing to step out of her comfort zone and learn new things, and that's what she's trying to tell them to do. So it was really helpful, but I found that as a coach, Patty was a co-teacher as well as a back, behind-the-scenes coach, but it was very similar. We should, you know, if you want to come up to Beckett someday, we'll do it again if you want. I'd love to. Thank you. And I guess I should say that every teacher is in a different place, so I think we talked about that. Some teachers Patty is meeting with outside the classroom ahead of time, saying, what is it you need, and what can I do for you? So it depends on where the teacher is to, and that continuum.
So it might be worth a suggestion, more transitioning, to have Patty come in and to do a demonstration on what coaching is and how we're using it, because it's a position you supported last year as part of the budget, and it's a new position for us. And today, we as an administrative team, we're at Beckett watching the coaching model, and Patty did a dialogue around what coaching is with Leslie, and the teacher participated and talked about what it felt like to be coached. So I know that it might be a nice time in the next couple months for you to meet Patty formally and hear about how her role is being impactful, given you supported it.
She also has video of it as well. Yeah, could it be videoed on stage?
Yes, the people we were with today, we had a teacher today who had our entire administrative team, two content coordinators in her classroom, and then met with us after to tell us what the coaching experience was like. So yes, we will plan that, because it's, I think it makes sense, one of the things, I think, Mr. Hopper, and somebody had recommended at one point, is once we, we vote for something, then what happens with it? So it might be nice to kind of say, this is how this is going.
We could do that. Thank you. And another component of that coaching is also planning lessons, and that planning phase, so there's definitely a planning component of it. There's sort of that classroom sort of embedded in the classroom component, and then there's a deep read, so did we accomplish our learning goals? How did the strategies that we use and we plan to accomplish our, our goal, which is always standard-based, how did it work? Like, what did we observe around the learning? It's all focused on student learning. Are we meeting their needs? So there is, there's, there is that component where sometimes it's the coach with the classroom teacher in a planning session, or in, in behind, you know, in the other end of that, a deep read session. The teachers are very open to it. I know today Patty was in the building, and several of the teachers saw her, and they said, can she come into my classroom? They don't view it as, oh, she's coming to see what I'm doing. They were really excited, and they were kidding, you know, kidding, they're arguing like, oh, come on, you got her last time. So it's a good thing.
Debbie's like hiding back there. They're doing like the awkward pause to give Debbie the cue, which is not taking-
Oh! Waiting for my slide to go up.
They're like, anyone else have a question? They're like, trying to get the language.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Debbie the cue. So, right, it's very crowded here today. A lot of things happening in the library. We took off the library's vent before, right?
You'll see some common themes with the elementary school, because we, you know, we were, we're trying to align a lot of our work in the district. So we have four goals as part of our improvement plan. The first one is really looking at the student achievement, and of course, that's what we're all about in schools, so we need one of these goals. And there's seven things listed, I'm not going to read them to you, but they're kind of clumped into three things. One is really looking at the teacher training, professional development. We are in, involved in the state's Tiered Literacy Academy and PBIS Academy, which is high-quality staff development. We also have a lot of new programs here. We have Eureka Math, I Science, and the Lucy Cockings units. And there's professional development around those programs as well. And the other one is looking at coaching and feedback. So they're coaching, giving feedback, coaching is part of coaching. And also my role is to give teachers some feedback. And we've identified three areas through a lot of things. One is the report that was written a year ago, student data, but engagement, student engagement in classes is one of the things that we've identified. Higher-order thinking has been identified, and rigor is the higher-order thinking. So engage, oh, standards-based, linking everything back to the standards that we're doing. So those are kind of the three overarching things, and getting to those through professional development, coaching, and feedback, and looking at the data, and making our plans based on that data is really looking at those, the benchmarks, and, and making sure that we respond to that data in an appropriate way.
I'm going to talk a little bit about PBIS and school climate, and also in the future slide on the social emotional learning, which, again, you've seen with the elementary schools are very closely aligned. We are a turnaround school, and so we have begun to develop a turnaround plan. Debbie has put together, I think, myself, Debbie, and some staff members, part of a turnaround team that are going to be going to help us put to a group at the end of November to help us put together our plan. We've already begun to do some of the things that are part of the turnaround plan that Debbie addressed in the first slide, having to do with student achievement. We want to align our focus and our vision and create lines of communication. You talked about that, like with the AP classes, we want to do a better job communicating to families and staff about what's going on in our school. And through the two academies that we are going to be involved in with PBIS and the Literacy Academy, we're trying to build capacity with our staff around leadership. So a variety of staff are going to be involved in those two academies, as well as the turnaround committee that we'll be putting together.
And a lot of the turnaround research does show that building that teacher capacity is really key. We have our PBIS team, so we have a Literacy Academy team, which consists of six teachers, myself, Patty, and Leslie. And then we have our PBIS team, which really speaks to the school culture piece, and that team has six teachers, myself, and two parents on it. We're going to go two days, next Monday and Tuesday, to get us started, and we're really fortunate, we're, get, our training comes from UConn, and it's like, that's really the best training out there. So we're going to start to work with consultants to develop our plan. We're at a different place than some of the elementary schools, so we have to kind of start from the very bottom. The first thing we're doing is bringing all of our discipline data from last year, the next, Monday and Tuesday, looking at where it is we need to, as a school, focus on to move forward and to build our culture. And that is part of the Department of Elementary- And that is part of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education academies that they provide for turnaround schools. And then really looking at that school discipline plan, the office referrals, where are these areas that we really need to focus on? And then start doing some of the hard work. Right now, we're really looking at NESCUS specifically and where we need to start our work.
What is teacher capacity?
Teacher capacity is like, if I went away, they have to have the capacity to continue. So no matter who is sitting in the leadership role, the staff here has the capacity to continue. So we need to get people on board, like part of the PBIS is two teachers will be identified as coaches. They will take a role in coaching the rest of the staff and bringing everybody on board. So then there's really, they're the ones doing the work. I have gotten, you know, a lot of really good feedback when I ask for people to be on this team. Nobody's said no. Like they all wanted to be part of it. And that's a big piece of it. They want to do it. They want to have, they have to want to do it in order for the work to continue. So that's where we're really trying to build that with the teachers, like raise their level of commitment to the work.
What kind of cultural based events like lit up have you done this year or are you planning?
Right now, so we have done, I don't know if you saw in the paper, we had Jessie Chris came here. She's a country artist. She won the 2018 Artist to Watch through Billboard magazine. So she came and her message was really around, she was a victim of bullying. So it was around treating people nicely and the kids loved it. There were a lot of kids out there and she, she actually told them, she's not with a record label yet, so she, she does allow them to videotape her and send it out there. Once she gets signed, they don't allow that anymore, but we were able to do that. And then the lip sync is kind of just starting. It's going to be in November. So we're, we're starting to look at things. We're doing a family bowling night in November for those people at Crandall. I know that I kind of like my family nights.
It's a family afternoon.
A family afternoon. It's Patriots and bowling. And so we're starting to develop things like that so that some of it's inside the school when we have the captive audience with the kids and some of it is outside, which we're not going to get everybody there. But hoping to see that throughout the year, and I think we saw that at Crandall, that we started slow and had small groups, but a year later, we were getting large groups of families to attend. So that's one of the things we want to happen here as well.
Oh, yeah. That is, that is the last one. So the social, the SEL, the social emotional learning piece of this, we've had in place here for quite a few years, some programs that we're trying to beef up. And one of the ways of doing that is the one that's, the one that's added is the number one, the World of Difference Program. I went to some training over the summer that was focused on building capacity with our students. So developing a program for peer leaders. I'm pleased to say that we are starting our training November 9th and 16th. We will be beginning our, these kids get 16, 17 hours of training with a member of the staff from the Anti-Defamation League. And then those students will be practicing their skills and then actually going into sixth grade classrooms to teach lessons. And it's all about deepening kids' understandings of and appreciation for people's similarities and differences. So that program hopefully is going to help beef up some of our other programs that are supporting our social emotional learning. We have a Gay Straight Alliance. We have a Safe Measures Team, which is working right now to do a survey of students through funding from the United Way. They're doing a climate survey, so it kind of gives us a starting point to see where we're at now through PBIS. I think we're going to be doing another survey at some point to get students' voice so we know what's really happening in the trenches with kids. And so Debbie mentioned that we had Jessie Chris here. We also had the district attorney here talking to our staff. And there's a plan to have a family night, talking about the anti-bullying laws and how we, our, our school districts policy around that and then helping to develop better plans to target those areas of concern in our school.
I've been heavily coached to keep it 10 minutes. I won't say who did it and if he sees aggressive hand gestures from Mr. Miss Innes because he's coaching me to keep it 10 minutes. Some of the things that you're going to hear from us are quite similar to the presentations that you heard on the school improvement plans for the elementary schools in NESCUS. There are a couple of wrinkles at the high school level, particularly in the way in which the state assesses us on the school report card that we are going to address. Lori spoke a little bit about that earlier. The first thing we're going to do is actually talk a little bit about our advanced placement data. That's one thing that we have here at Wocona that the other schools do not have. Let me go to the next slide. So we have two slides about our AP data. Some of this is review. I think probably everybody that's on the committee this year was here last year. So you can start to see some trends with our advanced placement data. It's important to remember at the very top that students basically take an exam in May and at the end of what's considered a school year, of course, in many parts of the country it is the literal end of the school year. In this part of the country it isn't. But they take an exam and there's a, there's a score range of zero to five, no matter what course they take, whether it's AP Biology, Chemistry, Music Theory, there's a score range of zero to five. So a score of three or better is considered a qualifying score. And what that means is that if you score a three on the AP exam, it means that some colleges may give you college credit, depending on the college you go to. And that's very important to understand. It really depends on the college that you go to. A four means that many colleges will give you college credit, depending on the college you go to. A five means most will. A five does not mean all will. It really depends on the college itself and whether or not they accept your AP Biology score for credit. Some schools will grant a three or even six credits, depending on your score. So we have two slides here and I'm happy to say we have two slides because five or six years ago, we only had, we would only have one and there would only be four courses on it. So if we can just go back to the first slide there, Leslie, for a second. AP Biology, Calculus A, B, Chemistry, English Language Comp, which is a junior level course, English Lit Comp, which is a senior level course, and Music Theory are on this slide. Music Theory, the reason why NA is there is we offer it essentially every other year. So in 2017, we did not offer it, but we offered it last year. A hundred percent of our students got qualifying scores. And you can see that there's been an increase for some, a decrease in others, and some are kind of relatively consistent. Our most consistent performers have been, at least on this slide, Biology, Chemistry and the two Englisches. We can go to the next slide. And these are the remaining AP courses that we offer. So it's important to note, last year, we offered 10 AP courses. Physics 1, Statistics, US Government and US History are on this board. US History, last year, we didn't offer it because we changed the scope and sequence of what is offered for history at Wocona. So now what happens is if you come in, you take US History 1 as a freshman, Modern World History is a sophomore, and then US History 2 as a junior. And you can take AP US History in place of US History 2 as a junior. Seniors are also eligible to take it.
So this is not, I mean, well, this is not great results that I see. First of all, I don't see a lot of, I mean, three is in the middle of the entire range. So it's not like that's an exceptional grade. It's a mediocre grade and fewer than half of the people taking that course now are achieving even a three. The other thing that concerns me is that our, in several of the courses, they're, they're worse in 18 than they were in 17, which, I mean, there are a lot of reasons for all of that. We're not headed in the right direction. The other thing, usually, particularly at Wocona, we've said, yeah, we're going to match the activity, excuse me, to the student, his capabilities, you know? And yet we're saying we're going to add, add courses or get more, more students taking these courses because the state says that's good, which, which is counter to what we're doing in other areas. We're not, we're not matching the courses with the capability of the student. And that concerns me. I'm not really, you know, something's got to be done with the AP. It's got to be improved. I mean, absent the state directive, something should be done to AP, I think, to get better results somehow. Not every teacher has to take a summer course to take, teach AP, don't they?
They ultimately have to take a course, yes.
But they don't have to the first time they teach it or?
It, it's recommended. Some, some do not. All of our teachers have as of this year.
So if something, something's not happening. You look at Physics 1, is 30% for a three? Is that, something's wrong there.
Yeah. I have a whole slide that addresses what you're saying and it involves, it has to do with rigorous coursework.
Erin?
Yep.
I just, the percentages really mean nothing because I really don't know how many students took it. So you really can't compare percentages from one year to the other. What's much more I think helpful is to see how many students took it each year and where they, where they scored. Because you don't get two students do it, you know, or three students do it and you only, you know, you only need one to not pass it and the percentages don't really mean anything to me when I look at it.
That is an important point also in the fact that the enrollments in these courses tend to fluctuate greatly, in large part due to the fact that mostly, it's mostly seniors taking AP courses. Some sophomores, more juniors, and then obviously even more seniors. And it, you know, when we talk about, you know, students' interests and what are the courses they want to take, their interests kind of ebb and flow depending on the classes. And the enrollments do fluctuate greatly. It's a good point.
And the other thing, I mean, this doesn't, this isn't a reflection of how they actually score in class itself. This is just a separate exam that the students take at the end of the school year to see if they can get college credit. This has nothing to do with how they're actually being graded on the coursework that they're teaching themselves.
Well, that, that's true, but it's an independent. It's, it's outside of the district assessing how well we did.
Right.
So from that standpoint, an independent assessment is more valuable than the teacher grading what he's taught.
I, I do have a whole slide addressing this. I do want to point out one, I'll point out one specific situation. Physics 1, the conversation I had with that teacher was very much about, since it's a senior course, senior stamina at the end of the school year. There are some students who by the time they take the exam have already been accepted to several schools and they have fortunately, three different schools to choose from. And in some cases, maybe they found out the school's not going to accept AP credit and so, so these sorts of things do happen. And the senior courses in particular is where we tend to see this happen more than the classes say. AP Biology where it's predominantly sophomores. That being said, that's just one example. We do have a far more, a far more broad approach to what we're going to be doing. And actually, Les and Blake Davis and I are tackling that this school year. I did want to, because one outlier that's been sticking out over the last, what, two or three years we've presented this, is US Government. One of our great frustrations is that US Government at Wocona has been offered as a semester course. You may remember up until this year, we had every other day classes. One year it was offered every other day all year. Another year, we tried to offer it just in second semester. And this year, finally, with some of the realignment and scope and sequence in our social studies department, we're finally able to put AP Government where it should be, which is a full year course. Our AP Government teacher has all the training, obviously, to go along with that. And we're a far better place than we were in the last two years with AP Government. There's plenty of interest in taking it. There's plenty of student interest in taking it, but now we're actually offering it as a full year course like we ought to be, like the rest of the nation is. And I did obviously want to mention, and Mr. Iacattella alluded to it, we are offering AP Spanish and AP French to students this year as well, which is new for 2018, 2019. I do have a whole other slide that addresses what we're going to do about AP in a minute.
Do you have to ever compare these results with the results of another school?
Yeah.
Or with the state?
Yeah, I, they're, they're pretty easy to look up and I do. And it's funny, Lori talked about this gentleman, Brian McCann, is the principal down at Joseph Case High School in Swaziland, who I've kind of bounced ideas off of because he's, he's been a principal for a very, very long time, highly recognized, and his schools' demographics are eerily, eerily similar, almost identical to ours. And they've had a lot of success in many different areas for an extended period of time. And we actually had a phone call this morning. It wasn't necessarily about AP, but we have talked about AP today. It was about our school report cards, you know, the state school report cards. But that's one, that's one example. I've also talked to other county principals about their AP experiences. I think it's important to note that AP around the state is school dependent in part that some schools are basically saying, I'll use Joseph Case High School just as an example. They let any kid take AP that they want. Any course you want, you take it. There's, there's no gateway prerequisite anything. Other schools, more in line with us, have what I would call expanded enrollment, which means that if you're going to take an AP course, it's going to be, it's going to be a conversation first with the teacher, you know, a teacher recommendation, your guides, counselor and your parents about whether or not you want to take on that challenge, whether you feel that it's an appropriate challenge, that sort of thing. And some schools, although state's going to, is obviously kind of cracking down on this, some schools still have these lablets of prerequisites that really kind of divert the cream of, the cream of the crop into AP classes, which is becoming few and far between. So yes, I, not, not only do I compare, I try to talk to principals about this, both in other parts of the states, but also local. Student achievement, this primarily has to do with MCAS. This year for Wocona, we are going to be going into the math and ELA tests, taking the test on Chromebooks, which is new for our school. The science test in the state is still paper based. So it's important to note that. The Chromebook experience is going to be new for us. However, we've done a couple of different things. Number one, last year, we signed up for every available field test, Chromebook style field test for, for MCAS so that we can start to work out the kinks and the logistics of actually taking them on Chromebooks. So we've been able to put students, there were some randomly selected students that we were able to put in front of that test while taking the Chromebook. This year, we also are going to be taking part in both webinars and workshops. Pete Anderson, our MCAS coordinator, and I actually went to a workshop down in Holyoke yesterday, put on by Desi. And Pete, myself, Sean Theryn, Mary DeMaranville, Melinda Walton, our content coordinators, are going to be doing a pretty extensive webinar on November 5th. So we're basically trying to, number one is all about the logistics of taking the test on Chromebooks and we're, we're doing a deep dive into that to prepare ourselves. Number two is about preparing the students for the experience. So like I said, some students who were randomly selected took an MCAS field test last year on the Chromebooks. This year, all Wocona students in ELA and math in 10th grade will be put in front of practice questions on their Chromebooks, old practice questions that Desi actually provides. Desi's doing, I think, a far better job this year of, of opening up the cohort of MCAS questions to prepare students to take them on Chromebooks. Number three ties into what's going on in every single school in the district. And that is ensuring that not only are we teaching to And that is ensuring that not only are we teaching to the state standards, but we're doing, we're fashioning instructional coaching around it. At Wacona, instructional coaching is done by the coordinators, so it's departmentally based. Number four has to do with interventions. We have what's called Math Lab and Bio Blast. They're semester-based. Bio Blast takes place in the second semester, and it's basically for students who have been identified as possibly struggling in their biology courses, so they're going to get some intervention going into the biology MCAS test in the spring. Math Lab is run in two semesters. The first semester is actually intended for ninth graders coming out of Mesecus who have been identified as needing intervention for the first semester. And the second semester is for 10th graders identified as needing some intervention going into the test. And number five, which already has been explained, we'll be using Edge Elastics Benchmarking System, which we're pretty excited about. It replaces the old Stead Island system. And we actually already put our math in the issues and sat them for their first benchmarking just this past week. This is the slide that I was referring to with regards to AP. The state, I'll start with the state. The state, obviously, wants schools to push students to challenge themselves academically. And Lori already explained kind of the rationale behind it. But it's not just the state that wants to push students to do that. We do too. And we did that in part by getting involved in the Mass Insight Program, what used to be called the Massachusetts Math and Science Initiative, a number of years ago. So, as far as, you know, motivating students to take more rigorous coursework, we were a little bit ahead of the curve in getting that done several years ago. I think this is our third year out of the Mass Insight Program at this point. What Leslie and I did going into this year, it actually started last June, is we sat down with our AP teachers, and we essentially talked about, we started troubleshooting particularly the talk of the scores, you know, the great fluctuations of the scores, in some cases, the declining performance and that sort of thing. And what that actually did is we were able to form an AP Action Play. And it takes the form of a Google Doc that we share and maintain with our AP teachers. And it basically breaks down who's going to do what in order to try to increase AP performance at Wacona. For example, we're going to make sure that if teachers need training or want an extra training, they're going to go get it. Some teachers self-identified, other teachers through conversations with me said, you know what? David Realization, you need a little bit more training, you need some brushing up and that sort of thing. We had one teacher go to a week-long intensive this summer, so that was good. The second thing, and I think this is a really big deal, number two, the College Board who owns AP, they're going to come to Wacona this spring and train all of our AP teachers on all of the new resources that are available from the College Board. The College Board itself has done almost a complete 180. They used to be kind of this almost secretive organization, and they used to hoard information and all that sort of stuff. They're actually doing the opposite, and they're going to basically open everything up to our AP teachers. And it's all going to be online, where students can actually sign up in the 2019, 2020 school year. They're going to be able to sign up and basically have an AP account for their course. And they're going to actually do, be able to do their own benchmarking throughout the year and get a lot more formative feedback as the year goes on. So, specifically, these, we believe, particularly number one and two, are going to help move our numbers a little bit. But also, at the same time, we don't want to slow down the number of students taking AP courses. We want to continue to encourage students to take, whether they're AP courses, but also any sort of advanced coursework. The state, obviously, counts pre-calc as an example. We want students to be able to challenge themselves. And that's what number three's all about, is sitting down and having specific conversations with students to help move those numbers a little bit. One other thing I do want to mention, and Mr. Gazillo brought this up earlier, with regards to the AP fees. We do a really good job of making sure that all students are able to sit for the exam and afford it in various ways, shapes, and forms. And those conversations happen once they're actually through the door and are going to take the AP exam. Because actually, starting next year, they're going to have to start registering for the AP exams in November for a May exam starting next year. But one of the things that I was planning on doing anyway, when we start getting into course signup time, which is early February, is I was going to try to communicate with families, because of number three, about all the different types of so-called rigorous coursework available at Wacona. I certainly was going to make a plug for Advanced Placement. But within that, just getting to your point, we can also make a point about the AP fees, because I think you do bring up a good point. Even if there's two students, with the way our demographics are, if there are two students sitting at home saying, or with their family saying, I don't think I can afford that fee, that's actually going to have a significant impact on our number statewide for number three there. So, I think you bring up a good point.
You know, saying that, maybe you could roll in some of the numbers to our relationship with BCC that we get credits for. They're not AP courses, but, you know, the Biology, Anatomy and Physiology. One daughter went into nursing, and they wouldn't have taken any AP classes. They told straight out that we knew going into it, we are not going to take any. We want you to do our nursing stuff. She didn't get credit for the BCC course, but told her sister the next year, wait till you take that. Mr. Furlong's a lot tougher than these guys ever thought of him. But that helped her. She didn't get anything for it other than knowing how to do it. And, you know, credit to him. That's what he's supposed to do. He's teaching a college-level course at Wacona. So, you know, that helps. And the other one ended up getting credit for it, so.
Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about PBIS. A lot of this, maybe a little bit competition for you guys. But we have already kind of introduced PBIS to our staff. We are now kind of moving into the implementation phase of this. We, earlier this year, had a day-long PD for the majority of our staff with Dr. Cheryl Whitcomb, who really gave us some good insight and some good information regarding PBIS, a lot of the different ways that can be implemented. So, a lot of teachers are really excited about the idea of getting into that. The things that we spoke about, Mr. Rob's Wednesday Twitter recognition is one good example of PBIS. We do simple things like that. And I can tell you, according to Dr. Whitcomb, something as simple as saying hello to a student hallway is considered PBIS. So, those are little things that we start, are going to try to start doing. And I believe a lot of teachers are engaging in that. But to really kind of move us along in the right direction, to make sure that the entire school is really going to be able to celebrate PBIS, as we said. We are going to have a school-wide introduction and blowout of the PBIS. Our plan for that was to hold a school-wide assembly early in the year. We are right now in the waiting phase for a video to be completed. Once that's completed, we plan on having a school-wide assembly to introduce all of our core values. We are going to create a PBIS leadership team probably within the next month, and then from there, create all the expectations based on our core value.
It's important to note for number two, that the core values work that was done was a collaborative process between both students and staff. The students were incredible, and we actually were able to pull in more students to become part of the video squad to make this video about our core values. Our core values spell out the word rise, resilience, integrity, self-direction, and empathy. And they made a video, and they were very self-critical about the video. They realized, I don't know, the vibe on this just isn't quite right. And it was at the end of last school year, and they came into this year, and they've been making edits and tweaks. And then they, all of a sudden, they stripped the music out and put new music in. But they want to get it right, so we're waiting for them, and we're not going to rush it. That's another thing that Dr. Whitcomb says, particularly about PBIS. It is not something to rush into. It is something to do carefully and methodically and make sure that your school's ready for the next step. And we're ready for that set, obviously.
Okay, as far as our social-emotional learning, we've focused on a few things here. In the beginning here, we talked about safety. Over the last year and a half, we've been really digging into a relocation/unification plan and drill. We did a reunification drill about a year and a half ago at Wacona, just in the school. Just a few weeks ago, October 9th, we ran a full relocation/unification drill at the stationary factory with the support of the state police and all the local police and emergency departments in our district. It went very well. The kids were really, truly amazing. Our ninth graders had done this the year before while they were at Mesecus, so we had that advantage. But the upperclassmen really handled this really nicely. The staff did a wonderful job of making sure that everyone was comfortable. We did have about thirteen kids who were re-unified with parents as part of the drill. So, our runners could perform their activities, our greeters could meet the parents. Everybody was in their specific role, and they got some practice doing it. And that's the idea behind the drill. We were very, very happy with it. After the drill, we did debrief quite a bit with all the local law enforcement. One of the big concerns that they had wasn't really anything to do with the drill, but more the transportation, getting to the stationary factory and getting back to the school. It went very methodically. In a real event, it would not look like that at all. It would look very different. And we understand that, and the police and everybody else involved understands that as well. Our biggest goal was to make sure that we were able to account for everybody, which we were able to do. We felt like the drill was very, very successful. We have had some staff, some select staff receive some trauma training, the Stop the Bleeding training. We had two staff take the training right beginning of the school year. In January, we're going to have a few more staff members take the Stop the Bleed training. We have five Stop the Bleed kids at our school right now that we're going to strategically place around the building with different staff members. So, we're pretty, you know, it's something we have to obviously think about, prepare for. It's not something we really like or enjoy, because, God forbid, we don't want that to happen. But we want to make sure that we are prepared, and we feel like at this point, we're in pretty good shape as far as our preparation.
Number six has to do with something that Julian Dowling mentioned. At Mesecus, we had two staff members receive Anti-Defamation League World of Difference training. And at Wacona, what that's going to look like, we have a lot of different student organizations and clubs, but we have three that really strike at the heart of school culture and climate. One is our Best Buddies Program. The other is our Student Ambassadors Program, which is partially supported by United Way, and our Gay-Straight Alliance. So, the two staff members that received training are actually advisors of two of those three organizations. They're going to basically be pulling those three organizations into closer orbits to one another, if that makes sense. And they're going to be doing a lot of work with one another. Not that they work against one another, but instead of working separately as organizations, they're going to start working more closely together as three organizations, almost as one.
And the last, I would be seeing, and number seven, we talked about graduation rates and chronic absenteeism. Those are two areas that we always want to continue to focus on. Our numbers, although pretty good, in fact, the median exceeding in chronic absenteeism are our numbers. We're always trying to look for ways to improve on that. We have a bi-weekly meeting with the administration and all the support staff, where we discuss students that might be at risk, who might need support. We've created Google documents that we share within that group that are now tiering kids based on the level of risk and support that they may need. So, we're really addressing specific kids and specific needs and creating very specific plans for all those kids. We want to try to get the best numbers possible for our graduation rate and chronic absenteeism. So, these efforts have shown improvement over the last year, and we're confident they're going to continue to show improvement in the future.
Any questions?
This one. Will you guys be doing the storm removal on snow days this year?
Snow video?
You talk about PBIS or whatever the hell you call it, but they're showing those, those are great. You know, shows you two in a different light than just, you know, the guy just standing in the hall.
Mr. Masine is the creative genius behind that. Yeah, he's absolutely.
We're storyboarding another segment.
Hopefully, you won't need it. Don't get me wrong. Hopefully, you won't need it.
I will say, Mr. Rebuse, our band teacher, is actually the creative genius behind that. He puts all the crud that we videotaped into something that means something.
Makes sense.
Makes sense. Yeah, we want to raise a chair down a ramp again or something. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is just, it's ironic that we had our principals here tonight. It's Principal Month, so what a highlight for them. They deserve a month of appreciation for all they do.
Okay, moving on to the agenda, we already discussed the preliminary act of our first members. Superintendent has no personnel changes to make. I'm not familiar with any old business or new business. Again, if you want to see something on the next agenda, please let me know, and we'll make sure that it gets on there for our organizational meeting that comes up in November. And finally, remarks for the good of the committee, and then we'll go on to executive session after that. With executive session, we do need to adjourn back into open session to take two votes. So, remarks for the good of the committee. Mr. Rob?
I have a couple, just invite everybody to the Extend Fair next week in Craneville, Thursday, after school lets out. The kids who do extra classes for the last five or six weeks, anything from Legos to cooking to chess to baseball, they'll be showing off what they did. And it's really interesting to see how they get behind something like that right after the school day. And as some of you may know, today is my last meeting after quite a long time. I won't tell you how long, but I didn't need these when I started. But I'd like to thank you all for putting up with me for all these years. And I guess a bigger thank would be to my family. Who, you know, they got rid of me one night a week, maybe two. By the grace of God, there was, you know, there was Grey's Anatomy and a lot of the bolstering. But it's been fun, and thank everybody, and it's been a real pleasure.
Thank you.
We have, I have a career profile in front of me. I noticed that Gretchen and Ostrander West is here tonight, and she's the new special ed director.
We're going to be talking about that next, a lot later.
All right. Well, I just wanted to welcome her. She's a former student of mine. And her daughter is also a former student of mine, and so is her brother. So, I just wanted to recognize her here.
Okay. Allow me to redolge upon you. I've got five things I wanted to mention as part of remarks for the committee. First of all, Mike already noted that this is his last meeting. And I think you've had somewhere between sixteen and twenty years on the school committee. So, again, thank you for your resource to the school committee. It's also another member's last meeting tonight, Mr. Gazillo. So, I want to thank him for eight years in the school committee, and of course, you're both always welcome back. If you have seats or something happens at the election coming up in a few weeks, does not bring forward, you know, the right to sit on your seats. So, we really appreciate it. I mean, you've both been a great voice to the committee and have different views. And, I mean, that's what makes the committee strong, is having diverse opinions and views to keep us all aligned. So, thank you very much.
It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
I definitely miss you both. I have to say that, for sure. Let's see, the next meeting is the reorganization, so before the meeting starts this time, those new committee members or returning committee members will be sworn in by the superintendent. We'll get that done before the meeting, instead of starting the meeting and then having the swear-in. So, that'll help things move along a little bit better, a little bit more smoothly. Again, on December 13th, Assistant District Attorney Kenzie will be here to talk to the committee about the social-emotional aspects, but as it pertains to cyber media, electronic media. And let's see, MAS. And let's see, MAS, MAS C report, just those who are going to the MAS C meeting, please make sure that you have a report available for our December meeting. We won't put you on the spot to have it ready for next month, but at least, you know, come forward and have about five to 10 minutes of, you know, your experience. And finally, I've signed up for the Charlie Bradshaw Latin trip coming up in December, so I'm going to give you a report on that in December. My son's going on the trip. I decided that I would offer myself up as a chaperone, so it's going to be interesting. The, the agenda for that is extremely busy. I think the first night, we don't get back into our rooms until midnight. So it's, it's a, it's a long three days, but it's, it's filled with a lot of activities. So with that, Mr. Luckett.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee goes into executive session at 8:50 PM in accordance with MGL's Chapter 38, Section 21A, 2, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union employees, and to approve past minutes for which the chair has declared an executive session is necessary to protect the bargaining position of the committee, and to reconvene an open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second. We have a motion on a second to go into executive session. Will the superintendent please take a roll?
Dr. Craftery?
Yes.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Gazillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Luckett?
Yes.
Mrs. Lazzori?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wegener?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a five-minute recess. All right, this meeting is reconvened in open session at 9:18.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee appoint Gretchen West, the Student Services Director, in accordance with MGL Chapter 71B, Section 3A, B, effective this December 3rd, 2018, contingent upon the conclusion of negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract.
Second. We have a motion on a second for appointment of the Student Services Director. Is there any discussion? Seem none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Congratulations. And welcome back.
I'm very excited.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee ratifies the contract with Melissa Fokowski as Assistant Superintendent of Schools effective July 1st, 2018, and expiring on June 30th, 2024, as recommended by the Personnel Subcommittee. I'd like to change that title, excuse me. That's, the right title is Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations.
Second. Have a motion second to extend the Assistant Superintendent's contract. Is there any discussion? Seem none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Congratulations, Melissa.
Thank you very much.
Move to adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn, all's in favor?
Aye.
This meeting stands adjourned. Happy holidays.